Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. This virtual meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education is now brought to order. It is Monday, August 10th, 2020. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance reflects your interest in local education, and each member of the Board of Education and the administration of the school district appreciates your commitment and your participation. To participate in the meeting tonight, during the citizens' comments portion, both before and after agenda items, you will need to raise your virtual hand. The administrator will see that and notify me, and you will be recognized. When your time has expired, Board Secretary Mr. Neal will notify you that your time is up. We're going to begin the meeting this evening with 643.20, which is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Will you please call the rule?
Yes, Ms. Hines.
President!
Myself also present, Mr. Buckloo.
I'm here.
Mrs. Meddell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
And President Cox.
And I am also in attendance.
All in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Next item on our agenda, 645.20, is citizens' comments on items that appear on this evening's agenda. Now, as I've said in previous meetings, this is the time during the meeting that citizens are invited to speak on issues that actually are on tonight's agenda. So do we have anybody that would like to address the board on agenda items? Now, I'm looking right now for for a show of hands. The administrator could message me and let me know who's first. Okay, I would like to recognize Jessica West. Jessica, will you please announce yourself and along with your address? And if Jessica, your microphone is currently muted, you'll have to unmute your mic. There you go.
I apologize. Hello, good evening, Board. My name is Jessica West. I live at 34622 Avondale, resident and mother of four children, three of which are in school age spanning from kindergarten through high school. My husband and I both work full-time, though currently mostly remotely, which has its own set of struggles. This decision is not an easy one, and I do not envy the position that you're in, but I implore you to take the health and safety of our children seriously tonight as you're casting your vote. I have read through the return to learn plans and the FAQs. I've watched the presentations, and I have to admit that I'm less confident now than I was before the district put out their return to learn plan about their readiness to return to school. While I appreciate the work that has been done, especially given the brief duration that our new superintendent has been employed, I'm afraid that what is being presented at the moment seems to be hypothetical and does not seem to be thoroughly vetted with the staff, student, and community input. The current plan options leave too many things to question, and our country does not have this thing under control, this thing being COVID-19. Plan one for face-to-face, you've not thoroughly addressed how to get facilities cleaned, how you maintain social distancing with oversized classrooms, how you minimize crowded common areas, enforcing mask usage, how shared resources are handled in the classroom. What have you already done to prepare these facilities for the return of students? Time is ticking. Plan two, does the A through K, L through Z really offer the reduced capacity necessary in classrooms to allow students to safely social distance? Last year, one of my children had over 40 students in her classroom. They didn't even have seats, let alone proper PPE. How's transportation being monitored so that we don't have three students to a seat? What engineering standards have already been implemented into these classrooms such as desks being moved front-facing, shields being installed, touchless items being installed to minimize the spread? Has the HVAC been reviewed to ensure that it can handle the capacity of students for continuous fresh air intake? These are all things that are being asked of businesses. They should be asked of schools as well. Plan three, what does the interface look like that you're going to be using? How are you delivering the curriculum? How are teachers interacting with students? What standards are you using in place to make sure that you're meeting the needs of the students? Spring was completely inadequate to no fault of the teachers. How will grading be handled? How will teachers be helping students struggling with virtual learning, et cetera? The online program that's being offered, what does this actually look like? And does funding still go back to the school, or is it all redirected through a third party? If that's the case, what does enrollment in this program have an impact on our teachers and staff? These are just some of the questions that should have been answered and presented to the board and community prior to making a decision, but alas, we're here. Recent headlines say 97,000 children tested positive for COVID-19 in two weeks as more schools planned to reopen. Outbreaks inevitable. 260 employees in quarantine after returning to a Georgia school district. The schools reopened and one child-
Three minutes have elapsed.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal, this is Wes. Thank you for your comments. Please conclude. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be Michelle Stample. Michelle, please remember that your microphone needs to be muted. I mean unmuted. Excuse me.
Please make sure they know to slow down a little bit for the interpreter.
I'll do that. Michelle, your mic, there you go. If we could go a little slower, we do have an interpreter signing. So if you could go a little bit slower so that she can make sure that everything that you say is seen and heard by everyone. Thank you, Michelle. Please begin.
Yes, I do everything that Ms. West just said, so I'm not going to go into those questions. However, I do have some concerns about the agenda that was supposed to be posted. It is not posted for tonight. I understand, you know, I've been in the district. I know what this is going to go on. I know these meetings. However, it is not posted online. The only thing that's posted is the third, along with the meeting minutes. Secondly, please keep in track, I know COVID is running rampant. Also, lice goes in rampant, and well, we can't control that in the elementary level. Third thing I would like to bring up, with my son going into his senior year, the end of the last school year for the seniors or for the high school level, basically, my son did nothing. He has not done anything since the middle of March. The teachers that contacted him only told him, email us once a week, let us know what you're going on. We did go get the food at the schools. We were giving packets, not mandatory. My son has not had any education since the schools were shut down. What is, ideally, I understand, and I did read and do my due diligence as always, but what really are you expecting kindergarten through high school to actually do? And this being my son's senior year, we're trying to get him to go to college, and I know things are going to go crazy for next year and everything, but please, my son needs education, and this is... I have been very upset this whole entire time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stample. The next person that would like to address the board is Tamara and Kelly Lozier. Or Kaylee, my apologies. There you go. Please begin.
Hello, my name is Tamara Lozier, and I'm a rising-
We're having a challenge hearing you. Is that something that you can help us with? Well, you go ahead. We'll try to make the best of it. Mr. Neal, please don't begin their time until she actually begins.
Yes, sir.
And speak.
I'll wait.
Can you guys hear me?
Say again, Kaylee. Let's move on to someone else. If you could work on your audio portion, if there's something that you can do, we're going to come back to you. We want to hear what you have to say. We'll come back with you, okay? Okay, Patty, your microphone is muted. Could you unmute your mic? And also introduce yourself, first and last name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Patty Shorsh. I live at 6531 Benoy in Westland. And I have one son going into seventh grade. And I think Jessica really summed up everything perfectly. All the questions that we were told to email in, none of them have been answered. Nothing has been specific. A lot of the rooms and buildings in our district do not have AC, let alone proper ventilation. And I really think that everybody needs to just come to the realistic truth that Wayne Westland is not prepared, is not prepared. Hopefully, we're more prepared to do virtual, and I want my son to go to school. I want him to go in-person, but we're nowhere near prepared, and that's the way I feel, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I believe that Tamara and Kaylee have resolved their audio issues, and I'd like to go back to them. Okay.
You guys hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Tamara Lozier, and I'm a rising senior at John Glenn High School this year. I'm going to express my opinion regarding the return to school plan decision that is being made today. I'm going to vote to have a full in-person school year. Past spring, one of my biggest difficulties was accessing reliable internet and technology overall. Most students' homes do not have enough computers for every student in that household, and it is also not a secret, the Wi-Fi is splochy and can go out unexpectedly. For instance, my internet goes out every two hours. Will students be penalized for a problem such as this that they don't have control over? Students and families already witnessed our district not having the adequate resources to do online learning when we tried this past March. Would the district provide to some degree Wi-Fi and computers for students that need it? I personally do not think our district has the funds to support the level of resources for the students. This leads to my next concern. We have tons of students in our district who live in abusive and dangerous households that involve drug abuse, alcoholics, physical and mental abuse. Sometimes the eight hours we are present at school is a safe haven for those students. If you do full online or even hybrid learning, every safety and security they felt will be stripped away, and making students stay home full-time would make those situations even more likely to happen. Our district's solution cannot be to email the students, especially since most emails go to the student's parents or caretaker, who is normally the abuser. Most students in this case would probably lie in those emails in fear of their abuser. In a Department of Health and Human Service report, it stated that teachers were responsible for more than one-fifth of the reported child abuse cases. However, during COVID, there have been less and less reports, but more and more cases. Adopting an online academic year deprives access to trained professionals who can identify the signs of trauma and the support children need. A known trauma specifically in our wider Wayne Westland community is food insecurity and food deprivation. If we go 100% online, students won't have the meals that they would at school. Yes, schools have implemented food banks for the students and families in the district who need food. However, it could be difficult to continue this for a long period of time, especially with the fact that those food banks didn't reach a lot of families in our district. From my own experience, the banks ran out of food 50 or so families in. The question becomes, what meals are our district going to provide to supplement those needs, no matter which option our school goes with? Lack of access to a constant food source, as well as a new school structure, will have and already has had drastic effects on students and teachers' mental health. These extended closures can be harmful to students' mental health and increase the likelihood of students engaging in unhealthy behaviors. An environment where students feel safe and secure, such as school, is associated with lower levels of depression, thoughts about suicide, social anxiety, as well as a higher self-esteem and more free time. If our district does anything other than full in-person learning, students won't have access to counselors. Schools play a critical role in the whole child and not just their academics. In addition to learning, in-person schooling provides a stable and secure environment for developing social skills and peer relationships.
We have three minutes.
Three minutes are up, and your audios just went out, Tamara.
Can you guys hear me?
Right now, we can, yes.
Okay. Can I finish on my conclusion?
Yes, you can finish your thought.
Okay.
Please be mindful that there are almost 900 people waiting, okay?
Okay. If we do full in-person, I believe that our district wouldn't have to worry much about coming up with a plan in three weeks for problems such as these that I have listed. Parents could get back to work, and I believe this is the best plan for in-person. Best plan in-person learning has been the normal we're all used to. It's also the same plan that has already answered the concerns of these things. For these reasons, I completely support the vote to do fully in-person learning. I believe it's a great way to make the students in our district feel safe and secure while still having a normal we haven't felt in a while. Thank you for listening to my concerns and comments, and I hope you take into account all that I have mentioned.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Matt Scherer. Matt, please remember to unmute your microphone. Your microphone's still muted, Matt. Down at the lower left of the program, you'll see the icon.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Please begin.
I would just like to state that I want my child to be in school. I think you should offer, if people want their kid to stay home, let them stay home, offer something online for them. But for the parents who want their children to be in school, I don't want my child, you know, I don't want him growing up with a ruined childhood. He needs the experience. He needs to work with other kids, work with other adults, and do all this in-person. And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your comments. Maria Raspberry. Or Maya, I'm sorry, Maya. Unmute your microphone, please. There you go. Please begin.
Yes, so my concern is that my son is eight years old. He's, well, nine years old, excuse me. He's going to fourth grade. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Would you mind stating your address, too?
Yeah, that's my address is, I live at the Landings apartment in Westland. So my concern, my son attends Edison Elementary School. My concern is that with the year coming up, and he's also African-American, so with the year coming up and with our knowledge of the higher rates of African-American deaths in 19, I do not think that it is best for him, and with a lot of other students unfortunately, to be in the school district, since it is known that even with adults unfortunately during this time are not willing to wear their masks, and the spreading of it is still exponentially higher than we were expecting at this time in Michigan. With that being said, for those, as the previous speaker stated, for those who are perhaps comfortable with being in this school, that may be fine. But with him being in fourth grade, and with my concern as myself and other family members and friends, and even my neighbors and the teacher's safety, I would feel more comfortable for him being fully online until not only the schools, but also the state has proven their ability to actually get a hold on this virus.
Does that conclude your comments?
That concludes my comment. No, excuse me, it doesn't. What is the plan for the elementary school? For Edison Elementary, for their learning? My only understanding is that for sixth through 12th grade, they've been addressed that it's fully online. I have not been given any details on what is being done for the elementary school. Is there an answer on that?
Now, this portion of the meeting allows you to address the board, but it's not a question-and-answer session. Many of the questions that you've just asked will actually be developed once the board makes a decision on the direction we're going in.
Do we have a timeframe in which we would have an answer for that? Because my job is also requiring answers.
I understand, and we'll have answers as soon as possible, but as I say, this is a portion for you to address the board.
Right. No, absolutely understood. So I appreciate being able to address it and the points of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Alex. Alex, your first and last name, please, and address, and remember to unmute your mic. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? I just want to make sure really quick. Okay. My name is Alexandria Offer. I live at 37058 Pinewood in Wayne. And I do have three kids that are in elementary school, well, one of which will be starting middle school this year. But my biggest concern is I have an incoming kindergartner, and my incoming kindergartner is special needs, like he has a speech and language delay. And I don't feel like we've really talked about what we're going to do. My son isn't going to wear a mask all day and stay six feet apart from another child, but I also worry that he's not going to get the assistance that he needs from online learning, but I'm scared to send him to school as well. So I just want to make sure that that's something that we're touching on as well, because I know that my child isn't the only child that has learning disabilities and special needs that need to be addressed. So I just want to make sure that that's something that we're, when we're like unrolling the plan, we're saying, hey, you know, I mean, here's what we want to do with these kids, too. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandria. Next is Ashley Davis. Ashley, make sure your microphone is, there you go. Please begin.
Hi, thank you. I'm Ashley Davis. I actually live in Ann Arbor, but I am a teacher in the district. I taught at four schools last year, and I saw 1,100 students. I'm a specials teacher. This year, I'm slated to be at two schools, and will be down to a mere 800 students. I feel completely uncomfortable with a in-person return to school with the current state of our school buildings. Having been in these buildings, I know what the cleaning routines are. I know how the HVAC system works. I know sort of the capabilities of our students to wear a mask or stay six feet apart from one another, and I don't feel that they have those protocols in place in our schools to keep our teachers and our students healthy. As other commenters have said, 97,000 students within two weeks tested positive for COVID-19. I don't trust that anything would be any different in Wayne Westland schools. I'm hopeful that the board will take teacher perspectives into account, teacher health. I have myself lost a child. I cannot imagine losing a student and having to go through that grief and pain again, or having one of my parents have to lose a child because of this virus that could be so easily tampered down if we stay home and we stay safe and we continue with our virtual learning until the state and the country is in a better place to be in-person. We don't know the effects that this virus has in schools, because as soon as it reached our state, all schools were shut down. We don't know how it is going to spread in our schools, and the schools that have opened have shown immediate outbreaks. As soon as schools in Detroit opened up, there were immediate outbreaks. And as a previous commenter said, a large population of our Wayne Westland schools are students of color. And those students of color are more highly affected by this virus because of systemic racism in our country. I cannot fathom seeing one of my students become violently ill or possibly lose their life. I can't fathom seeing one of my coworkers across my schools succumb to this virus because our board and our superintendent can't make the call that so many other districts in our state are making to keep everybody safe. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you for your candor. Our next speaker will be Crystal Rowland. Your address, please, Crystal. Unmute your mic, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to chime in. My comment was geared towards-
Crystal, will you give us your address, please?
I'm sorry, yes. Crystal Rowland, 1988 Steber Street, Westland. So my primary concerns are geared towards the children who have IEPs, who may have both mental and behavioral concerns. There has not been a lot of information that has addressed how the district plans to accommodate those students, either virtually or in-person. As a single parent, it is not ideal to have my child home to educate him myself. However, I am not comfortable sending him back to a school setting that is 100% in-person. With all of the challenges, I know that homeschool or virtual schooling will present for us. I feel more comfortable for his health, his safety, and well-being if we did opt for a 100% virtual school setting for the next school semester. With that being said, I would hope that the school, the district, the teachers will come up with a better virtual learning plan than what we got at the end of the school year. There was a lot to be desired with that, with children in general in mind, but specifically children who have IEPs. So those are my concerns, and I believe that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Our next speaker will be Noel Dorsey. Noel, please announce your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Noel Dorsey. I live at Towas Trail in Westland, 33621 Towas Trail. My concern is, like others have spoken already, about how the children that have IEPs, how are they going to get the additional help they're used to get in school, in a school setting, if it goes virtual? My other thing is, if this goes back to one-on-one learning or in-person learning at any point, will there be temperature checks every day? Will there be some type of screening when these children walk in the building? And I just also have concerns about kids that need technology and Wi-Fi. That's basically it. Thank you for your time, and I admire everything everyone's doing, and I pray this comes to an end soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Our next speaker will be Mackenzie. Mackenzie, please announce your full name and address, and remember to unmute your mic.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question was-
Can you announce your full name and address, please?
I'm so sorry. That's actually my daughter's name, but my name is Kamani Little, and I stay at 33448 Balmoral in Westland. And my question was kind of geared, well, not question, but my comment is for, I've been reading all the plans, trying to keep up with it, and I just, I'm hoping, I haven't seen a lot of things geared towards the special needs children. I have a daughter that goes to McGrath, and I haven't seen anything, you know, she really can't learn virtually. I know she's in a smaller classroom. There's only about five kids. I would be comfortable letting her go to school with just the smaller classroom, except, but I wouldn't want my high schooler to go. I don't know if that makes sense. I know it's smaller. You know, it's not that many kids in there, but I would like to see more information on what we're going to do about our special needs children that, because she's missing out on a lot of therapy. She gets physical therapy, occupational therapy, pool therapy, everything at school. And as a working mom that works 40-plus hours, because I'm a social worker, I can't take her to outside therapy all the time, so I kind of depend on that part. So I would love to see something geared towards that when the plan is being made on what needs to be done, what's going to be done for next school year. And that's just it. I just hadn't heard anything, so I just, and I've been trying to keep up with all of the email.
Thank you for your comments. As you know, this is all still developing, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Okay, thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you. Our next speaker will be DePica Baja. Please announce your address and remember to unmute your microphone. We'll give you just a couple more minutes to unmute your microphone. We cannot hear you. There you go. Please begin. Your address, please. Administrator, we're going to uh, give them an opportunity to correct whatever challenges they have and we're gonna move on to Ray Boyer. Ray, please announce your name and address and remember to unmute your.
Hi, Ray Boyer, 4855 Woodward in Wayne. Uh, I'm just calling, I'm a teacher in a different district. I, I think it's insane uh, the idea of sending kids back to school in person. Need to wait till this thing gets under control and just the technical errors we're experiencing in this meeting should be reason enough to understand that we're not ready for for this. Uh, that's the end of my comments.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. I think we, uh, we're gonna go back to DePica Baja. I think we, uh, have that worked out. Give them just a moment. Apparently we're still having a challenge. Let's move on to the next speaker that is asked to address the board and that's Charlotte. Uh, Charlotte, please, your name and address. Remember to unmute your microphone.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Seeley. I live at 29044 Richard. Um, I have a incoming freshman and a senior at going to John Glenn and I guess I want to know what's going to happen with um, career tech. I hadn't heard anything about, you know, what's the plan with career tech and if that's going to be addressed. And um, I also feel that with everything that's going on, that I would like to be able to send my children to school full-time. It's, it's for social reasons and just for learning reasons and I feel if I can send my children prepared for what they need to do and with the resources that they'll need to be able to, you know, self-sanitize and, you know, with masks and understanding, you know, being able to distance from other children, because right now they're doing, you know, football and cheer. And that's been going well. I feel if you equip your children, at least the older children, with what they need to do when they're going to school, things can definitely be under control in, in that manner. I, I just, I feel like the in-person schooling is just so important and um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. Our next speaker is Crystal J. Crystal, please announce yourself with your full name and your address and remember to unmute your microphone.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, um, yes, I'm not gonna give my full address, but I'm Crystal. I live in the city of Westland, uh, off of Fanoi. Um, my children attend Hamilton Elementary. Um, I also work in the medical field. I'm a nurse. Um, my concern, my children are immune compromised, all three of them. They're asthmatics. What I wanted to ask, or actually just bring to your attention, um, would the children be in immune compromise and all three of them being asthmatics, usually the school have to keep their medication um, in the office. Um, one of them have to have an EpiPen. Um, we're also a trilingual family, Hispanic as well as Asian. Uh, with those demographics alone, um, that puts them at high risk. Uh, with this virus, not only is it potentially, and not just potentially, it's airborne and also keep in mind contact precaution. That puts my children at risk. With some of the information, when I attended your meeting last week, it's saying that the children, when they're in the lunchroom, they would, if it's in face learning, take their mask off to eat. Remember the virus is suspended in air at, um, you know, when they're in closed corners, um, which puts them at risk. So if the children are eating, that's still putting them at risk. So even if they're wearing their mask throughout the day, then they go to eat, they're still at risk. It's airborne. Um, then the children, if they're touching surfaces and my son, who's a twin, puts his hands on things, he's touching things, he puts his hands in his mouth, he's at risk. Um, also, I'm an asthmatic. If he's gonna come home and he hasn't used proper precaution, washing his hands and sanitizing, he's now bringing this virus home to me. Now, yes, I'm a medical professional. In the hospital setting, we're using N95 masks. We are also using downs and goggles. You guys aren't using this in a school setting. So those are my concerns with the children in the school setting and also the teachers. So I understand that you guys have a tough decision to make, but think about it, the children are innocent. It's very difficult to keep them from, you know, to use the social distancing and all of that. They don't understand this virus. The school is not set up with proper ventilation. Um, so those are a lot of things that you guys have to take into consideration. Also, their pediatrician is concerned about a spike, so they didn't even do um, their physical in person. He wanted to do it virtually because he was worried about them coming to the office because they're asthmatics and having them be at risk. So just think about those things when making your decision tonight and that's all.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Caitlin Knight. Uh, Caitlin, please remember to unmute your mic and provide your address, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Caitlin Knight. I live on Somerset, off of Cherry Hill and Fanoi. My son, Jackson, will be a third grader this coming school year and my youngest son Connor will be a newly enrolled kindergartner and they would be attending Hamilton Elementary. Now, um, my son, Jackson, has extremely bad allergies and is also severely asthmatic. He um, has been diagnosed uh, in the last three years with pneumonia 13 different times. He sees a pediatric pulmonologist as well as his pediatrician on a regular basis for um, his asthma checkups every other month. Um, but when everything started with COVID before, it was ruled by the governor to cease in-person learning back in March, uh, my son's pediatrician actually was um, pulling him out of school i- in fear of him contracting COVID-19. And specifically told me that my son, for Jackson specifically, if he were to catch that, that it would be fatal for him. So I would absolutely appreciate having the option of virtual learning for both my third grader and my soon-to-be kindergartner. Because if my kindergartner goes to school in person, then he is still bringing home the potential risk of spreading whatever germs and possibility of contracting COVID, not just to me as his parent, but also to my eight-year-old who could potentially could kill him if he were to contract COVID-19. So I just wanted to put it out there that I would absolutely appreciate uh, virtual learning for both of my sons. And that is it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Christine Sichaki. I, I hope I pronounced that right. Christine, please remember to unmute your microphone and announce yourself with your name and address. Please begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just fine.
Thank you. Christine Chahoki, 34125 Tonkus Trail. Um, I just wanted to bring to the attention of everyone on the call that as of yesterday, there were two new cases of COVID in the city of Westland and zero deaths confirmed. Um, although I do respect everyone's opinion on our students being back in school, I think there is a great precedence to have in-person opportunity for those that seek it. I feel that the school district has offered an ability to go online. Um, we've had multiple emails. So if it is not an option for your family, perhaps look into that. For those of us that want our students in school, I feel we should have that opportunity. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you. Thank you for, for addressing the board. Our next speaker will be Dawn Parker. Dawn, please remember to unmute your microphone and announce yourself with your name and address.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine, Dawn. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dawn Parker. My address is 807 Westland. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have a eighth grader at Stevenson and I'm actually at John Glenn right now, picking up my 10th grader from football practice. I understand everybody's concerns and I'm also a substitute teacher in your district. Um, I feel that people that wanna keep their kids home online should be able to and those of us that want to send our students should be able to. Whether the board decides if it's two days a week or all together. Um, again, I'm a substitute teacher. The children that are gonna suffer by staying home are your lower-end kids. The high-end kids, the kids that can get on, take direction well, they can do their online learning, they'll probably have no problem. But the students that need to sit with me at the back table, the rainbow table and have extra reading and have extra spelling, they're gonna need that and those are the kids that are gonna suffer. So I beg you as a board. So if people choose to want to go online, give them that opportunity. But again, those of us that want to send our kids back and our students want to go back and be part of the Westland community, give them that opportunity to do so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dawn. Our next speaker will be Mindy. Mindy, please announce yourself, your full name and address and remember to unmute your microphone.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Just fine.
All right, thank you. Um, I am a parent of three children in the district, preschool through seventh grade. I'm also a teacher in a different district. Um, I am concerned because my son has an IEP and that his needs won't be met online. Um, however, my two-year-old or my preschooler has severe health issues and sending my kids to school could bring those home. Um, so I want to urge the district to take into consideration the students with IEPs and how they're going to be met. Are they going to be allowed to come in in small groups um, to the schools since we have that 10 or less grouping set in? Um, if we do all online, um, how are we gonna make sure that everyone's needs are met, including the parents who want their kids to go to school? And then the families like mine where it could be detrimental to their health. Um, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Our next speaker is Vivian Dylan. Vivian, please announce yourself with your name and address and also remember to unmute your microphone.
Hello?
Hello?
I am Vivian Speakman, 4850 Gloria in Wayne. My son is going to be in the 10th grade at Wayne. And my main concern is, has the district looked at other districts throughout the state of Michigan as to how they're taking the proceedings to start up with the school districts? I've heard everybody's statements. I agree with the first two. How much has been looked into? What has been contributed to? And how is other districts looking into how they feel they should send hybrid face-to-face or virtual? My son has stated he is not going back to school. He is in 10th grade. I don't blame him, but I also have concern. But I also don't have a concern. I do not feel we're in a position in our district to start full face-to-face. There's just too many things to be looked at and too many unnecessary objectives that are here that are indeed to be more in place. I have several uh, teacher friends in the district. I know people in the district. I've talked with them in the district. I'm not saying who, but we, I do not feel are in a position to go back full face. If kids do want to, that's fine. I can go hybrid or virtual. I've read emails. I've heard from Dr. Anderson, but I'm going to be concerned for my son. Um, I know we're in an uncertain time. We all are. People think this is fake. I do not agree. It's not fake. Too many numbers out there that we can't figure out. They can't figure out and they're putting out there, but our students are our number one priority. I hope that this looks into a little further than just within the next couple of weeks through the district because I really want my son to be protected. And I know you're gonna do everything you can to keep him safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker will be Ernie Collis. Ernie, please announce yourself with your address and remember to unmute your microphone.
I am Ernie Collis, 11,000 Block of Alvin Street. Um, two kids in the district. So a few of the things, the AC was a very good point. Lot of heat, lot of kids sweating, lot of kids in a normal school day come home sweating. That creates a lot of sliver behind a mask. Um, the, the seven days we have left to decide between the online or in-person, um, without having the full decision, without all the information of what in-person's gonna look like, um, that should be considered to be extended. Um, question about punishments for non-compliant students and how, how that might look. Uh, whether it's gonna come back on, on the parents, the families, uh, the child, is it gonna cost them time away from school or learning? Um, kids can't stay six feet apart on buses. Are we, do we have a plan for that as well? A little bit more time in between classes, is that gonna be an option for children? Um, sometimes they do have to run between classes and part of do with mask on. Um, we have a lot of children in the district that are unable to wear a mask due to medical issues. Are they just stuck with an online option at that point? Or are we gonna have some sort of a special consideration? If there's a spike in classes or in spike of in cases in the schools, uh, how fast is the district or the board going to reconsider uh, an in-person decision that's what's made? Or, you know, is there any timeframe or is there a set number before that? Uh, we, do we re-pause this and, and relook at it? Uh, will the district reallocate possible surplus funds if there is any? Um, with this situation with, if there is a decision for in-school learning, it, is anything uh, gonna open up and will they have the ability to allow uh, maybe a hiring of more teachers? Maybe uh, separate and bring in some more help? And um, the, I covered. So the big thing, you know, the biggest things, we, there's just a lot of, a lot of unknown factors in this. And um, my biggest thing is, will, how, how long are we gonna take before there is a um, reconsideration on how this is gonna work if cases do rise? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Collis. Our next speaker will be Cindy Jenkins. Cindy, please announce yourself with your name and address and I see you've already unmuted your mic. Please begin. Cindy, you're being recognized, but you have not unm- okay, there you go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, just fine.
Wonderful. My name is Cindy Jenkins. I live at 35682 Fame Street in Westland. I have a child going into fifth grade and one going into third grade and I have um, a couple concerns. Last year, we had some difficulty with the bushe- buses at Schwein. Last year, we had some difficulty with the buses at Schweitzer. The bus driver quit or was removed and therefore there was no additional bus driver to transport the students. So buses from my, children from my daughter's route were consolidated onto another route which overcrowded that bus.
Cindy, are your comments at this point have to do with an item on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I'm concerned that because there's not enough bus drivers in the district, that there's going to be too many children on the buses at one time and you won't be able to properly socially distance them due to the shortage. In addition, I have concerns that shared equipment in the school, library materials, media materials, the computer lab, outdoor equipment, that that's not going to be properly sanitized to prevent the spread. I do have concerns about that. So I urge the district to implement a full virtual learning. I understand that's an option for the older grades, but on the website it says that I may apply for virtual learning for my elementary students, but I'm only able to apply. Submitting an application does not guarantee that my daughters will be able to utilize that option for the school year going forth. So in the event that application is denied, I'm still required to send my students to school and put them in an environment where I don't feel the district is fully prepared to be able to monitor the health and safety of the students and the staff and prevent the spread. Further, I have concerns, how many cases is the district willing to let pop up amongst staff or students before you've decided to make any alternate arrangements if you are allowing or requiring the students to come back to school whether part-time or full-time? What is that number? What is the number of cases? Is it based on the individual school? Is it the district as a whole, elementary versus high school? Where does the district draw the line and say, we're at too many and now we're sending everybody back to the virtual learning environment? And is the district prepared to transfer between a full-time in-person versus hybrid versus virtual and have to make those transitions throughout the year? And will parents be expected and then prepared to make those transitions with perhaps a very short notice like we were back in March when the governor shuttered all the schools? So numerous concerns that are forefront in my mind as someone who did have COVID in March, I know what it feels like. I have extreme concerns for all of, everyone in the district, parents, teachers and the students. I don't believe it is a wise decision to send the students back and I urge you to really look at a full-time virtual model until this, that this, that the disease is that this virus is under control.
Thank you, Cindy.
That is all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deepika Boha. We tried to make this work earlier. We're going to try it once again.
Hello, can you hear me?
This is self along with your address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just fine.
Yeah, thank you very much. So my name is Narash Bhoja. So Deepika Bhoja is my wife's name. I live in 36164 Landings and based on this, so many unanswered questions, unanswered questions and a lot of questions are surrounded with this COVID-19, my vote is for online virtual learning. For my kid is going to the kindergarten from starting this year, but I don't want to send my kid to school in person. Having, I have another baby came here and just a six-month-old baby. I don't want to take a risk by sending my kindergarten kid because their kids are playing around and touching each other. I don't want to take any risk by sending kid to school and in person. I definitely encourage, we can think about it, online learning. So that's my opinion. Thank you very much for giving.
Thank you for sharing it with us. Our next speaker will be Jennifer. Jennifer, please announce yourself with your full name and your address and remember to unmute your microphone before you begin speaking. Will you unmute your microphone, please? Administrator, we're going to move on to Terry. We'll come back to Jennifer. If you could recognize Terry. Terry, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your mic. You can find that icon in the lower left-hand corner of the program. Okay, having some technical difficulties with Terry, we're going to move on to Jen Ox. Jen, please announce yourself with your name and your address and remember to unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Oaks. I'm at 53 Ginger in Westland. I'd like to say that most districts are going virtual for at least the first 30 days and then they'll reassess the situation in September. We need to follow suit and keep our children safe. As I'm an educator in the district, outside of the district, I understand concerns for parents, teachers and children. I understand that kids with IEPs need accommodations. We can accommodate them by doing small group settings. We can do one-on-one through Zoom. Children and families who don't have internet can get it at a low cost in which the district can cover like other districts are doing. We can support our families. We just need to put the resources together. Right now, it's not the time to make knee-toe decisions. We need to think about our children and our teachers. Our teachers are putting their own lives at risk, putting their families at risk. My daughter is going to be in first grade and as a full-time single mother during the lockdown, it was really tough and I get it for a lot of people who have to go to work or whatnot, but at the end of the day, we need to consider our children's health, which my daughter, if she was to catch the virus, would, it would be traumatic, along with my father who watches my children while I go to work. Again, keep in mind, I am an educator and I understand and I'm a parent and I understand everything that's going on. Please just keep in mind that the district should think about resources to help feed our families, make sure that our families are getting the food they need, the resources they need, the tablets, the computers or whatnot. This should not be a full school year thought, but maybe in a short, timely manner. Let's go month by month, maybe. Let's just think about the safety because 97,000 people have been affected since schools opened in the South. Just keep that in mind and just know that I have faith as an educator that people will make the right decision for Wayne Westland schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Our next speaker will be Dottie. Dottie, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your microphone.
Hi, my name is Dottie and I am a parent of three children, an incoming senior, seventh grade and second grade. And my concern is just with the fact of how they're going to handle things with hybrid, are they going to accommodate? So if children are in Group A, if, are the whole family going to be in Group A or are they going to be split up between different days going to school? And how it's going to, just how it's going to work? I'm okay with my children going back to school and I would like that. I feel that's best for their learning and my main concern is how are they going to accommodate so the family's not running every day to take kids to school on different days?
Does that conclude your comments, Dottie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, may I claim the attention of the chair?
Yes, certainly, Dr. Weaver.
I know that you're trying to let everyone speak and everyone is concerned on this issue. However, we have greatly exceeded our time. I believe 30 minutes is what is allotted for people to speak and I just want to know the chair's intention.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. I appreciate that. I think the unusual circumstances that we're living in right now, I think it's important that everybody that wants to address the board be given an opportunity to do that and I'm going to continue to ask people who would like to address the board to do that. I think our next speaker is Lisa Hayes. Lisa, please announce yourself and your address and remember to unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. I'm Lisa Hayes. My address is at 36926 Green Bush Road, Wayne, Michigan. I have two students, one that's at Wayne High and one that's at Schweitzer, fifth and 10th grade. I'm kind of caught in the middle of how I feel about them attending school. My fifth grader does have ADD and Zoom did not work at this, in the spring because he was just watching his classmates and did not pay attention to the teacher. So it did not work virtually for him. He's not, he does not have IED. He does not need one, but that virtual kind of learning did not help him. My older son, he's a little different. He's on the honor roll and everything, but my point is, is regardless of how it's chosen, I do think that you have to keep in mind of the teachers and all students' health. This virus is real. This, you know, I've heard a little bit of banter with some of the information that I saw online and I just, I don't think the whole school board really believes or generally believes that the virus is real and that, or what the situation is, that, how serious it is, but I do believe you guys are going to make the decision you're going to make, but, but it's important to understand, I understand that most of you guys don't have kids in the school district. So you guys are not personally really affected by this like our children are. And like the one parent said, like the AC, Schweitzer doesn't have AC in their school, right? So instead of groundbreaking for a brand-new kitchen, you guys could have put the AC in Schweitzer's school so the kids wouldn't be sweating while wearing masks. I'm just certain things that all come together that just didn't make sense that now we need that are going to be an issue for them to actually go back to learning in the classroom, you know? And I do agree that maybe they should go back in a virtual state until we have more information or the virus is more contained. Who knows? But my thought is majority of the board members do not have children in the, in the system and for them to make a decision about our children's well-being, it's hard for me to understand that whole persona. I just, I just don't understand that and I, I really hope you guys make the right decision and really think it through when you guys do make the decision.
Three minutes is up. Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker will be Danielle Mackey. Danielle, please remember to announce yourself and include your name and address and unmute your microphone. Danielle, we still have, there you go.
Hi, my name is Danielle Mackey and I live at 37058 Orchard Circle in Westland. I have three children, one in preschool or going into four-year preschool, one going into the third grade, one going into the fifth grade. I'm also a bus driver for the district. I do have a huge concern with them going back to school as much as I would like them back in school. I do have some concerns as far as even the buses go. There is no possible way that we could do social distancing on a bus. So me as a bus driver, if I go back, even if I do keep my kids out of the district school, who's to say I don't catch it and bring it home to my kids? So I just really hope that the board is taking all of this into consideration and will make the right decision for all of the kids. Also, I heard earlier somebody state that the younger kids needed to be in the classrooms more than the older kids because the older kids can manage to do the Zoom online and everything that they need to do, but my concern is having three under fifth grade, I don't think any of my three would ever be able to keep a mask on all day. So I think the younger kids are the kids that are going to be more at jeopardy for getting the virus and, you know, those are the ones that are putting their hands in their mouth and, you know, sharing things. So that's it. That's all I wanted to say, just hopefully everybody makes the right decision for all of our kids.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening will be Bonnie Ballard. Bonnie, please unmute your microphone and announce yourself with your name and address. We're having some challenges with this particular speaker.
Okay, can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
I live in the 400 Blackham Bar Chester in Westland. Someone wanted to know about libraries. The libraries, the state closed the libraries in Phase Four and unless the district supplies us with tubs, that we can take our books and store them for three days before they're checked in to get rid of the virus. That would be a problem. My situation is, is that I feel really bad for you guys. This is a no-win situation. I understand that completely. I don't think parents understand as a district, we don't have enough equipment for every single student to have a device. So the online learning is going to be a very big challenge if everyone has to be connected in a classroom to a teacher at nine o'clock in the morning. There's not going to be enough devices in the district for that. I think that parents who are concerned about their children and autoimmune diseases, they should take the district and do that online. Take sign-up for edgenuity and do the K-12. My other thing is 30% of online kids fail and I think they need to understand that. This last, when we shut down in March, I only had two failures, which was great because I was in contact with those kids all the time doing their online learning. They understood that, but they have to look at 30% of kids fail online and those were my concerns and I hope we have training for the parents and the students on how to do this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Our next speaker will be Terry. Terry, please announce yourself with your name and address and unmute your mic. I know we had some challenges last time. Do we have you? Terry? I see you, Terry, but I can't hear you even though your microphone is, is obviously not muted. Terry?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Hi.
Hi.
My concern is, is I have two special needs children. The one is in Franklin. He has severe obstructive sleep apnea, a heart defect, asthma. My daughter has asthma. I know virtual learning doesn't work so well. The one is in Franklin. He has severe obstructive sleep apnea, a heart defect, asthma. My daughter has asthma. I know virtual learning doesn't work so well for my son who lives in Franklin. My daughter is fine with it. My concern is sending my son back to school, who is not going to keep a mask on, medically shouldn't be wearing a mask, but touches everything, put everything in their mouth, don't understand social distancing, doesn't understand not to touch things, put their hands in their mouth. I'm very concerned for them to go back to school. I am also a school bus driver in your district. Social distancing, I don't know how that's going to work on the buses. And I could potentially bring that one to my son and daughter. My son got very sick in November. His pediatrician took him out of school until January. He was in the hospital for a week. He was sick for three weeks, lost twenty pounds. I, I just don't think that our children should return face-to-face. Cases are clearly rising. My cousin has her master's in nursing and has expressed all potential possibilities of children contracting this virus and potentially killing my son. And I would like to know what you guys are going to do or how you can help the special needs children if we choose not to send them to school for medical reasons. And what we're going to do about these school buses. I can't afford to bring that home to my, my children. And that's all.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
By the way, I see, looking at the virtual hands, that many people who have already spoken have raised their virtual hand to speak again. I'd like you to know that we're interested in what you think. We want to hear it before our vote. But you will be allowed to address the board only one time. Obviously, we have quite a few people and we're trying to get everybody's point of view, so. Okay, the next person, Tom Dietrichs. Tom, please unmute your mic and announce yourself with your full name and your address. Begin when you're ready.
My name is Jennifer Dietrichs. I live at 33824 Yuma in Westland. The only concern I have is I want my kids back in school, but when I checked into the online school, I wouldn't be able to just send my son back to school when I felt ready. So that was my issues with the online school. Once I signed them up, he's got to do it for the whole school year and I feel that we should get to make the decision when we feel that we're ready to send them. After a card marking or a semester, after we see some kind of numbers. So that was my only question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrichs. Our next speaker will be Sarah. Sarah, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I live on Alvin in Westland. My concern is I have a high schooler and one going in second grade. My one in second grade, he's a little behind on his reading. I just want to know what the online schooling would look like and how that would grab his attention. Also, me and my husband work full-time, so how does that play in? Is there like certain times they have to be on there? Or is it just do it when you can do it? I truly feel that the people who want to do online should be able to do online and the people who want to go back, who want to send their kids back should be able to send their kids back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speaker is Pastor Thomas. Pastor Thomas, if you could announce yourself with your name and address and also remember to unmute your microphone. Pastor Thomas, another moment or two.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, I'm Pastor Thomas. I live on North Rickham, right off of Sutton. And I thank you for the opportunity. I won't hold you long. But when it comes to children in our church, we do live streaming now. We stop gathering in the third, at the third Sunday of March, except for people that need to assist with the live streaming. But recently, a couple of the people who assist with the live streaming, they brought their children to church and in the fellowship hall, they were running, they were playing, they were hugging, they were laughing because of the fact that we are a social being. The Bible says it's not good for man to live alone, so it's just natural for us to want to hug, to touch, et cetera. My concern is this virus is still elusive. They just showed on the news the other day, a seven-year-old child who passed, who had no medical complications whatsoever. And they're still finding out things that they didn't know in the past. People still have complications well after the virus. Me and my wife had it. I still don't have a sense of smell. I read of another lady who every day at twelve o'clock, she still has a high fever, body aches, et cetera. And if you look at the news now of late, more children are starting to be affected by it. I'm saying that because I know that as a school district, you're between a rock and a hard place. Even the funding is dependent upon children being in the school, which I also understand that. And I guess my, my hope is that you would sit down and figure out the best possible way for the people to be affected by this virus the least amount. Maybe it might have to be a hybrid where one day you have A through B coming to school, C through. So the less amount of people gathered together, the less amount of the chance of people getting it. And especially the children going home and giving it to their grandparents, of which I'm one, or parents, et cetera. And I also want to say I'm praying for you all. I know this is a very hard decision for you all and I pray that you just make the best decision with the people in mind.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. Appreciate your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to, to say at this time that we certainly want to hear what everybody has to say, but if the comments that have been made so far are basically the comments that you would make, be advised that, that we are considering these points of view and these challenges. And, and later on in the meeting, when we have an opportunity to hear from the superintendent, some of these questions that you have will be answered. But our next speaker is going to be Dee Pierce. Please introduce yourself with your name and address and unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Doug Pierce. I live at 37521 Whitney Drive. My concern is, I work in a big manufacturing plant in Ohio. And we literally are at the point now where we almost really don't have enough people to even run. And that's forty miles away. You know, that's not, that's not far. That's a hop, skip and a jump. And their numbers are rising and rising. It seems like everybody's going virtual, at least for the first little while. But you got to take into account, this is real, it's spreading, it's close, it's getting closer. And people need to realize that. I, I hope you guys make the right decision. But it is real and it is spreading and it affects everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Our next speaker will be Amy Adsmann. Amy, please announce yourself with your name and address and unmute your mic. Begin when you're ready. Amy?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Amy and I live at 3605 Yanon Road in Wayne. I just had some comments in regards to the online learning. My son has disabilities. He's going to be a junior in high school this year. And the online learning wasn't an option for him. He cannot do that. It's impossible. We've tried everything. I mean, I'm a single mom. I work full-time. I also have a three-year-old. So when we tried to do the online learning, it was impossible. It got to the point where his, his like counselors and, and the occupational therapy and everybody was telling me, nothing's going to be great. Just don't worry about it. I can't have that. My son's already behind and I can't have him get even further behind the rest of the people. I mean, are we thinking that maybe we're going to start holding people with disabilities back so that they can get to that level where everyone else is at? Or is there going to be some type of hybrid learning? Is there going to be some type of program where these kids can get together? Because a part of my son's disability is socialization. We're taking that completely away. So I just need to know what plan is in place for all of the therapies that we have. And that's all.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker will be Gabrielle Klein. Gabrielle, please announce yourself and remember to unmute your mic.
Hello, I'm Gabby Klein. I live at 3731 Hay Street in Wayne, Michigan. I'm actually going into my senior year at Wayne Memorial High School. And right now, I've heard a lot of comments of people with concerns about the lunches and all that and how like the masks. I'd like to say I'm in the Wayne Memorial Marching Band and we're currently going back to rehearsals. And, you know, we have eighty to ninety kids in our band and there's not really that many kids in a lunchroom. And I feel like it'd be extremely easy for kids to be able to social distance without masks in that situation. I guess if there's a will, there's a way kind of thing. Also, as a high schooler, I've noticed that many kids rely on the in-person learning. And so, you know, especially the high schoolers, so keeping, you know, giving the online option for the younger kids who are, you know, upper elementary, like sixth and under, would definitely be beneficial, but I definitely feel that middle school and up should be in-person, even if starting off as a hybrid and just pushing into the in-person learning.
Does that conclude your comments, Gabby?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Go Zebras. Our next speaker will be Kimberly Combs. Kimberly, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kimberly Combs. I live on Chestnut Street in Wayne. I have three children. I have a soon-to-be four-year-old preschooler. I have a son going into kindergarten and a daughter going into the first grade. Where they go to Switzer and they love it. The only thing is, I am very worried about a choice being made for completely virtual. Because, especially for younger kids, older kids, you know, and I know everybody has said this, but kids take a risk on getting COVID just going to the supermarket, going with their parents out. But there's definitely precautions that could be made at home. And there's other options for a face-to-face learning. Like, we used to have in my hometown where they had AM and PM classes, which would, you know, shorten the school load and shorten the, the number of students on a bus, you know, because you have basically the student couldn't have. And then obviously, any parents that want to have their kids stay at home, if they have the luxury of being able to teach their kids at home, more power to them. That option is readily available, not just through the Wayne Westland one, but through other, other schools as well as online learning. There's multiple school, online learning schools out there for them. Now, I can't comment, obviously, on the special needs for in-person school because I don't have that. But for most kids, at, at the very minimum, a hybrid, I think a virtual for everybody would be, it would hurt the kids more than anything. There are so many preventable, like if your kids come home, take their clothes off, give them a bath when they get home instead of like in the morning or at night, you know, and that will, they'll get rid of it. There's things you can do to limit the risk from your kids coming home, contracting it to their family. But there's older things that, like I said, AM and PM classes, or extend the school day a little bit so that it's more kids have the option to go to school or that more kids, more parents can take their kids to school if the bus is a problem. I just think that my son going into kindergarten, he really needs that. And especially, he's going to have to have speech therapy. And you don't. And I just feel like returning to school would be better. And any, if the kids are stay at home and go virtual, their, their parents are going to want extracurricular activities anyway. And in those extracurricular activities, you're going to face the same problems that you will as if they went to school. They're going to have problems with masks, problems with, you know, other kids being close. Probably, they go to the park. You take your kids to the park. That's probably the same thing. You got parents and kids going on this, and that's definitely not sanitized. You can tell the park, you know, they don't sit there and disinfect that. So that, that's, that's my little friend.
Thank you for your comments, Kimberly. Our next speaker will be Stephanie Harper. Stephanie, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your mic. Having some trouble getting Stephanie Harper online. Let's move to Michelle Brown. Michelle, please unmute your microphone and announce yourself with your name and address. Having challenges with Michelle Brown. We'll move on to Stephanie Madison. Stephanie, please remember to unmute your microphone and please announce yourself with your name and address. Having challenges with Stephanie Madison. We'll move on to Pastor Edward Pruitt. Pastor, please remember to unmute your microphone and announce yourself with your name and address. Pastor, you've got to unmute your microphone, lower left hand of the screen. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I do apologize. I just had a few comments that I want to make and I understand a lot of comments have been made. I also understand that you all are making a tough decision. It's, it's not an easy one and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to the comments of the residents. I am a pastor as well as executive director of Better Westland. And what I find when I look out into the community, I notice that with the effect of COVID-19, it affects certain classes of people differently, certain demographics differently, whether it be African-Americans, whether it be our citizens who are above a certain age. And that's a concern because many parents have their, their fathers and mothers take care of the children while they're at work. So we have those concerns there. The other side of the concerns is the educational value. Part of educating is learning social skills. And we will be teaching our children in this environment, certain social skills that we may or may not want them to possess for the long term. So I hope that you take that into consideration when you are making this decision. My personal view is that in-person should be limited, but we have to also look at it from a broader community perspective. We have to look at all the downfalls as well as the benefits. And we have to weigh which ones are most important. When I look out into the nation and we notice a county in Texas that had eighty-five children diagnosed with COVID, say they come in contact with five people, that's a lot of people per day for ten days. That's a lot of people that could be affected. So we want to make sure that we are taking precautions there. And finally, we want to make sure that we do not risk our children. Our children should not be put at risk. They should, we should take every precaution to make sure that they are in a safe environment. And even if that means that we hold off on even the beginning of school until there is some more control over this virus. I thank you for the time and that's the end of my comments.
You're very welcome, sir, and thank you. Our next speaker will be Stephanie Clark. Stephanie, please announce yourself with your name and address and remember to unmute your mic. Having some challenges with that. We'll move on to Heather Murphy. Heather, please remember to unmute your mic and announce yourself with your name and address. Having challenges with Heather Murphy. Having challenges with Heather Murphy.
Mr. President, Mark Neal here with the question. I wonder if we could close citizens' comments at this time. It's been an hour and a half. We've heard sufficient comments, both in favor of going back to school and also in favor of virtual training and combinations thereof. I think it has been adequate to give the board a good feeling for what we're faced with at this time.
Is that a motion, Mr. Neal?
It is a motion.
Is there support for Mr. Neal's, Mr. Neal's motion to end citizens' comments on agenda items?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver? Is there discussion? I'd just like to say that I agree. I certainly understand everybody's concerns, and frankly, so, so many, if not every single one of the challenges that were mentioned by the speakers were part of the conversations that we've all had, and we're concerned for that as well. I think that, at this point, there's a motion on the table, and there is support. So, Mr. Neal, roll call vote, please. And the motion is to end the citizens' comments portion on the agenda and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Myself, I vote yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell? I see your lips moving, but you're, there you go.
I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself, yes.
Yes, okay. And Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
I say no per the Open Meetings Act. I think that everyone should be able to have the right to say how they feel about their children going back to school during the pandemic.
And President Cox?
I also vote yes.
Sixty-eight, one, eight.
The eyes have it. Citizens' comments are concluded for agenda items. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. President?
Excuse me?
It's me, Meddell. We need to add another agenda item.
Do you have a motion, Carol?
I move that we add to the agenda after the Head Start Report, a report on the Foundation for Improvement of Instruction.
Okay, the motion by Carol Meddell is to, following the Head Start Report, so it would be six-five-two-point-two-five, a report on the Education Foundation?
Yes.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, also yes, and President Cox?
And I vote yes. A report which will be given by Mrs. Meddell for the Wayne Westland Education Foundation is now six-four-five-two-point-two-five on the agenda. Our next item on the agenda for the board's discussion is six-four-six-point-two-zero, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on consent?
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Walker. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, also yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
President Cox?
I vote yes.
Seven, eight.
Motion passes unanimous. Six-four-seven-point-two-zero is Board of Education Committee reports on the Finance Committee report summary. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cox. We had a meeting on July 23rd of this year. Our meeting was conducted on the Zoom platform and was called to order at 10:08 a.m. Mr. Wenzel, our Executive Director of Technology, explained that to comply with the law, we need to provide a filtering system for our Chromebooks that students will be using in school and also at home. The necessary technology is available through REMC Safe Consortium. It will cost about $67,000, and it's good for three years. The funds will come from the CARES Act Fund, and because we're purchasing through REMC, no bids are required. Ms. Cleaves, our Executive Director of Finance, brought us up to date on the purchase of 19 new buses. These will use propane, and the initial cost is just over $2 million. This amount will be offset by a grant of nearly $850,000 from the Volkswagen State Mitigation Trust, plus an additional 30% reimbursement from Wayne County RISA for the five buses, which will be used by our special education students. This will be a general fund purchase, but will be refunded to the general fund with bond monies in the year 2022. Both Mr. Wenzel's information and that from Ms. Cleaves are going to be acted on the board yet this evening. Mr. Spiezak, our Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations, updated the committee on our upper elementary playground relocation plan. The cost will be in the neighborhood of $120,000. The project will come back to the committee and to the full board next month. Mr. Spiezak also informed the committee that we will start replacing our high-volume copy machines. He has a budget of $260,000, and is in the process of seeking bids at this time. A proposal should come before the board in September. Finally, Mr. Spiezak updated us on construction bid packages at both high schools, replacement needs at Career Tech, and our need for external Wi-Fi system. These projects will be covered by CARES Act funding, and will come to the committee in September and to the full board in October. Ms. Cleaves told the committee that we have received $127,482 from the state for COVID relief expenses. She also informed us that we would not suffer a cut to our Student Foundation grant for the year 2019-20, the year just passed. But we might experience a cut for the current year 2020-2021. Ms. Cleaves also reported on our financial, on our fund status and comparative spending for July 2019 with July 2020. Superintendent Dignan cited the Business Office and Operations for outstanding work during these unusual times. Our meeting was adjourned at 10:39 a.m. Thank you, Ms. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. The next item on our agenda, six-four-eight-point-two-zero, is review and approval of business service and finance items. Mr. Dignan? We're just going to Mrs. Simmons? I thought that was just a whole load.
Thank you, President Cox. I am going to turn this over to our Executive Director of Finance for the district, Ms. Shanda Cleaves.
Good evening. Requesting board approval to purchase three years of licensing of the Lightspeed Relay Filter and Relay Rocket. These licenses are applied to district-owned devices, and they're federally mandated that we have these filtering services while our devices are both on and off campus. The total award recommendation amount is $67,030, and that will be charged to the CARES Act.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support. Ms. Hines, was that you?
That was Mrs. Walker.
Mrs. Walker, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal. Was there discussion? Is there discussion on this federally mandated, we have to do it whether we like it or not, decision? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, also yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
President Cox?
I also vote yes.
Seven, eight.
Okay, we got the feds off our back. Section two, Recommendation for Bus Replacement and Purchase.
I'm requesting board approval to purchase 19 buses. This will include five buses for special education. The district was awarded on March 20th, 2020, a bus replacement grant in the amount of $849,071.20 to help replace our buses. And then, in addition to that grant award, Wayne County RISA will add an additional 30% reimbursement for our five special education buses. All buses purchased will be propane power engines instead of the diesel that we currently have, and they will result in a significant cost savings for our district. The total award recommendation amount is $2,122,678. $849,071 will be charged to the bus replacement grant. $177,110 will be charged to Wayne County RISA, and the balance of $1,096,496 will be charged to our general fund with the expectation in 2022 that the bond will reimburse the general fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Meddell. Is there discussion? I guess I would like to add at this point is the significant cost savings is a consequence of the cost of propane fuel versus diesel fuel?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So that's bound to get better if petroleum becomes more expensive. That's great. Roll call vote, Mr. Neal.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, also yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
I vote yes.
Seven, eight.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Six-four-nine-point-two-zero is a Board of Education Committee report regarding the Policy Committee's work. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Policy Committee met via Zoom on July 28th at 6:00 p.m. Committee members present were Hines, Meddell, and Weaver. Staff present, Superintendent Dignan, Jill Simmons, Tamara Phoenix. And the meeting was opened at 6:00 o'clock. We reviewed policies from Lusk and Alberson. These two policies, 901 and 902, have to do with discrimination and harassment in the workplace. So, on 901, the board is committed to maintaining a learning-working environment in which all individuals are treated with dignity and respect, free from, new word, illegal discrimination and harassment. On 902, we deleted "to serve as the school district's compliance officer to investigate and resolve complaints of illegal harassment and discrimination", and replaced it with "to supervise the implementation of this policy".
Does that conclude your report, Dr. Weaver?
No, it does not. Let me just make sure. Also, we have a person in our district that is taking care of our student portions of director's human, or Director of Services handling the student portion of these situations when they arise legally. Superintendent had no comment. Board member Meddell had no comment. Board member Weaver had no comment. And Board member Hines shared that she appreciated the district putting on the virtual town hall, and that she felt that it went very well. Meeting was adjourned at 6:10 p.m. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Is there a motion, a resolution to change board policy pursuant to the report?
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Meddell. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Focker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And President Cox?
I also vote yes.
Seven, eight.
Good work to that committee. Six-five-zero-point-two-zero.
Wait, 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 Mr. Cox. There were two motions here. You need a second one. On, on policy 9.02. If you'll notice.
Clarification, was the maker of the previous motion on subject A, 9.01, only?
Yes.
They have to be done separately?
It's according to this, they do.
Okay. Motion on, on 9.02?
I'll move. Support.
Mrs. Meddell, support by Mrs. Hines. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and President Cox?
And I vote yes, and thank you, Carol.
Seven, eight.
Six-five-zero-point-two-zero, finally, Mr. Dignan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Recognition and Appreciation Days.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, board and school community. Item 650-dot-20, Staff Recognition and Appreciation Dates for 2020-21. I'm asking that the board approve the dates listed to recognize individual employee groups for the important contributions they make to the overall success of our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Dignan. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Mrs. Meddell, supported by Mrs. Walker. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Neal?
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
And I vote yes.
Seven, eight.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Next item on our agenda, six-five-one-point-two-zero, is the Return to Learn Plan. Mr. Dignan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cox. I'm gonna ask that I share a presentation with you for the superintendent's recommendation.
Please proceed.
Thank you again, school board and school community. Before I get started, I'd like to thank all the people that have participated in the committee work, teachers, support staff, administrators, transportation, food service, technology, the curriculum instruction assessment team, special education operations, communications, human resources, and the collective bargaining units. But most importantly, I want to thank the community members that participated in our surveys, from their emails, asking questions, the phone calls, and everything else. Again, it's all played a part in this recommendation. And again, there's no easy answer here. As a lot of people that have spoken have kind of touched on it. Wayne Westland Community Schools, again, is deeply grateful for, again, all the contributions made. I can tell you, the committee work that was done, the needs of all stakeholders were taken into consideration for the district learning plan. Their time, energy, and expertise developed district learning plans for uncertain future. And learning and equity is the focus of the district learning plans. And again, I heard equity is a theme when people were speaking earlier. We, our committees were transportation, food service, technology, curriculum instruction, special education, safety and operations, communications, childcare, and wellness. A social-emotional learning is gonna be embedded into our instruction to ensure, again, the mental health of our students and our families, as well as our staff. We will have a survey that goes out tomorrow that focuses on staff wellness, and both for instructional and non-instructional staff. We also have to talk to other partners, which I'll get into a little later, Easter Seals, CNS Healthcare out of Novi, to help provide more service for our students and families. Again, the overview of the work, we review and reflected on the spring 2020 educational experiences. With that being said, when March 13th hit, again, it was more of an emergency of learning than learning. And again, a lot of things. And again, a lot of things probably weren't set up. We've had time to kind of view different platforms and things of that nature to kind of change the experience if we had to go virtual at some point. We investigated potential model options for the fall two thousand twenty. We developed instructional and learning frameworks for full traditional, which is face-to-face learning. The hybrid model, which is a little in-person learning, as well as remote or virtual, and then full virtual online model. Again, we were planning for academic considerations and identified possible professional development supports and trainings for our staff on the model that is selected. We worked diligently to prepare for this return to learn roadmap that prioritizes opening and operating safely and providing our students with the highest caliber learning environment, whether it's in-person or distance learning. We learned much since March. Again, the circumstances, responses to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency are regularly changing as people alluded to in some of the examples and comments they made in public comment. To the end, our committees have met, discussed, and collaborated to prepare for this new educational reality. Must be acknowledged that the pandemic is not over and that, of course, remains largely unpredictable. It is possible that state officials at some time could move the region or regions back into phase three, which would necessitate further school closures locally, regionally, or statewide. These are the return to learn plans, and it's a visual depiction. So the first one is face-to-face instruction. It's also known as full traditional, where we return to a kind of schooling in a full model. All students return to school. A hybrid instruction kind of has partly students both coming in person and then also doing virtual learning. And then the virtual instruction is distance learning or remote learning, where students are doing this at home. All the instructional delivery models included the following consideration. The Michigan merit curriculum with appropriate pacing and power or benchmark or priority standards. Five days of instruction and learning following the school calendar. Some things that were added that really I heard evident, daily attendance is required during this plan, consistent content and common experiences for all students. Grades and assessment and teacher feedback has to be a part of whatever, whatever model selected. Live instruction, including small group instruction, class destruction, and independent practice. Again, we, I have alluded to the mental health supports, that the social emotional learning needs are met again through telehealth and other mechanisms to help support our kids and our families. Opportunity for interactions with peers, certified teachers, district provided student devices, K-12, and internet connectivity for families that need it. And I heard that loud and clear through a lot of the phone calls, emails, and everything we received. Small group of students may have in-person instruction where permissible, depending on individual students' unique needs. And I'll get into that in more depth. Again, the return to learn criteria, first and foremost, the health and safety of our students, staff, and families, both physically and emotionally, was the number-one criteria. Equity and accessibility to quality programming. Again, the instruction, especially the virtual capabilities, will be a lot different than they were in the spring. The mode of instruction that can be consistently offered in uncertain times and the opportunity to enhance instruction. I understand many of the decisions are complex and multifaceted. The final recommendation are an imperfect solution to an impossible situation. But we are committed following best practice and implementing them to the benefit of all of our invested stakeholders. Some full face-to-face instruction or the full traditional model. We couldn't social distance with the recommended six feet of distance if we brought all of our students back. Socialization for students not the normal. Safety measures in phase four are the highest measures outside of phases one through three. The other thing, too, is pre-March thirteenth, schools not necessarily going to look like it did before just because of some of the safety measures that have to be in place, such as row seating, facing in one direction. Teachers kind of being stoic in their launch point in the front of the classroom, just to name a few. Student and staff adhering to all required safety protocols. Students' health and safety, how do you stay up if you're sick? Staff health and safety exposure from all students, substitute if a staff member is sick, and then possible disruption to education. So even if you start face-to-face, there's a chance at some point during the semester that you might have to quarantine based on the number of cases, and then you would be in remote learning. The hybrid model is a limited face-to-face learning and remote model. Social distancing, depending on the number of families who offer in-person learning, will help dictate classroom sizes. We couldn't social distance with the recommended six feet of distance. We, in most of our classrooms, would be four feet, and that's clearing out a lot of the, the books and little libraries, especially at the elementary levels. Students may have a very different experience educationally from a remote person. Movement and mixing of groups of students while at school is secondary, becomes challenging. Again, just by the sheer numbers of seventeen hundred students and the challenge to provide consistent instruction in person. If staff or students become ill and must quarantine, it could be a possible disruption to the teaching and learning process. Again, the hybrid model, again, students only receive instruction two days per week in person. Technology would not go home, so print materials would need to be brought back and forth by students would be the only consistent instructional materials. Pupil accounting would need to relabel every course and every student because of the fluctuation between face-to-face and remote. Virtual online instruction, social distancing not a concern for the general education. Instruction, most certified teachers will teach online, limiting exposure of students, staff, and families. Student groups not mixed while online at the secondary level, where we talked about the large populations. Provide opportunity for the most consistent instruction program over time and best ensures the health and safety of students and staff. Um, my recommendation is that the Wayne Westland Community School should adopt a hundred percent virtual online to start the school year, as we are in phase four of the Michigan Safe Start Plan to start this coming school year. Rationale, it's the safest option for our students, staff, and families. It allows the most consistent instructional method for uninterrupted instruction during challenging times. It can be implemented with current staffing. We can offer more rigorous online offering than in the spring. Again, we learned a lot reflecting there, and we feel much more comfortable in kind of the platform that we will use to start the fall. It offers us a unique opportunity to strengthen our capacities in delivering both teaching and learning. The model would be taught by Wayne Westland Community School teachers utilizing Wayne Westland Community School curriculum, which I think is huge. Again, if we adopt the virtual online model in phase four of the Michigan Safe Start Plan to start the year, students and teachers, again, learn how to navigate instructional technology. I heard we will have tutorials for students, for families, everybody, and kind of walk in people through the steps to kind of navigate some of the instructional technology. It also promotes innovative thinking, learning, and collaboration, both amongst the teacher as well as our students. We can repurpose some staff to provide additional storage, support, home visits, food distribution, mobile hotspots. I'm going to pull and lift two of these out of here. What, one thing we would do different than, than happened last spring. Food distribution will be distributed out of all of our schools. That way, it makes it more accessible to our families and our kids. And we would package them, both breakfasts and lunches, a week full of meals. Again, we would set that the times and the, and the, and the days that we would do this distribution. We also partnered with the United Way. They were kind enough to make a twenty-thousand-dollar donation for mobile hotspots. We plan to repurpose our buses to go to areas that we know have connectivity issues to serve as mobile hotspots. So our kids can access Wi-Fi and they have access to their education. We will provide improved instructional materials for our high school staff and students. We track retained students who did not want to attend face-to-face instruction. And we continue to build trust relationships with stakeholders, parents, students, staff, and union leaders. Again, as we are, the Wayne Westland Community Schools adopting a hundred percent virtual or remote model in phase four, special considerations have to be made for special needs populations. So again, we can talk about learning and service pods for some of our students that might need to have some face-to-face learning. In regards to special education, students with IEP, the district administration, special education department will collaborate with parents and guardians and systematically review student programs on an individualized basis to ensure contingency plans are in place for those students. Wayne Westland Community Schools would stay a hundred percent virtual, remote learning while in phase four of the Michigan Safe Start Plan. Again, we would remain in this model through the first, through the end of the first quarter. And that would be nine weeks, which would take us up to October twenty-third, regardless of where we're at in the Michigan Safe Start Plan phase. This gives us a chance to build our platform. Consistency in grading, teacher consistency for the first quarter allows us time for local and state trends to stabilize back forth and develop proficiencies for students, staff, and families, should we enter phases one through three at any time. Allows planning for phase five contingencies and logistical considerations. So again, we could have touch points during the first semester to figure out face, in-person learning, again, that is safe and takes into consideration our staff, all of our families, because I heard it time and time again, we have a lot of multi-generational homes, and, and our students. So again, a transition period of two weeks will be necessary to bring students and staff back in-person, instruction safely, and to adjust possible staffing that may have to be redeployed, especially during the virtual or remote learning. Some possible next steps, special population staffing, meetings with HR and collective bargaining units to have letters of understanding. Again, because COVID-nineteen really has changed, regardless of what models pick, has kind of changed the language of some of their agreements. Continued instructional planning, continued professional development planning for our students, staff and family training, a mental health task force committee, building more service for our community. So we have Beaumont that last spring provided some telehealth. We are bringing aboard Easter Seals and also CNS Healthcare out of Novi to provide more service for our students and families, again, to help them kind of navigate these uncharted waters. The start-of-the-year plans and developing possible touch points during the semester. We can look and examine where we are at. I know some people brought up the William D. Ford Center C T is different. We could, and this is just a hypothetical, we could mirror some of the things higher learning is doing of where our students are driving things virtually, but then opening up classrooms for labs, especially in things like HVAC or auto mechanics, so our kids can get that practical experience, get through their segments, and become completers. Because again, there, there are different points that we can kind of start to phase this in and look at some of the processes and protocols that we have in place. And again, I can't stress this enough, just looking at different learning and service pods through our committee work of things that possibly, i- if we feel things are a lot safer, to kind of phase in this learning. Internet connectivity in the community, hotspots. I talked about the United Way. We are going to kind of follow kind of the bus route that we used this year for our literacy tour and set up in areas that we know last spring had issues with connectivity and try to answer that by converting some of our buses into mobile hotspots. Because again, every kid should have access to their education. Our food distribution is going to change. We're going to use all our buildings for food distribution. This will make it easier and more accessible for families, instead of having one spot kind of dictated by. I'm going to lift up in a few minutes and talk about childcare. We're going to increase our telehealth capabilities, and we're going to do this by partnering with mental health agencies. District Family Resource Centers are going to be open and are still going to serve our community. We've entered into a partnership with the University of Michigan. They have a program called Wolverine Tutors for online tutoring. And again, we want our teachers and our administrators to kind of talk about what that could look like. Is it going to be study groups? Is it going to be individual tutoring? So we have some plans to kind of meet the needs of our kids. And then building a cadre of building subs, recent graduates and retired teachers that we can carry into the school year. If they aren't subbing, they help be interventionist for our students to help them transition on this online learning. And again, we would carry them for the whole year, just because we don't know what our future looks like. This is a Champions Program, and I'm not. Champions is a third-party childcare program. We've been meeting the last couple of weeks with them. And if we're in a virtual or hybrid model, that means that a lot of our families probably need daycare. I've heard it many times, a lot of families have to get back to work. A lot of the unemployment benefits ran out at July thirty-first. We don't know where they're at now. If we're virtual, and again, that could be phase one through three to four, i- if the board takes this recommendation. We are going to use twelve buildings to run daycare out of. And again, we've knocked down the price with the vendor. It would resume if we ever enter back to face-to-face, full traditional instruction, it would resume to last year's prices. But if we are virtual or hybrid, it will be twenty dollars a day from eight-thirty to three-thirty. Full day would be six-thirty to, six-thirty P M. would be twenty-seven dollars. You can't beat these prices. We have a lot of families that would qualify by filling out paperwork for free, free daycare during this time. So again, if, if for some reason, we go back to some kind of in-phase learning in the hybrid model or transition schools back, what we would do is we would vault up our childcare in our twelve buildings by pods and put them at Marshall Middle School. So for instance, if Schweitzer, if their three or four classrooms of daycare was kind of bottled up or bucketed up, because we were going to some kind of in-phase learning, we would take them, we wouldn't mix the kids, and we would put them in their pod at Marshall to make it best, and, and again, follow the social distancing guidelines, everything, temperature checks. And again, they're required in childcare to find, follow some of the same standards. The Family Resource Center will remain open to all of our families. We'll work with our schools to determine the needs of our students and families. We've asked for donations and continue to be contacted by a lot of community partners, as well as industry partners who are interested in donating school supplies, P P E, to the Family Resource Center. This is important, because some families might not have access to some of the P P E. They can get that from our Family Resource Center. Again, our Family Resource Center will maintain regular contact with students and family who are experiencing homelessness and/or foster care placements. Again, we will try to provide basic need assistance and items to families. And again, we'll adopt and change our method of delivery and service as we receive guidance from the Wayne County Health Officials. We have three Family Resource Centers in the district, Adams Middle School, Franklin Middle School, and John Glenn High School, and there's some contact information for families. The Wayne Westland Online Learning, K-12 is different. So, and, and I'm going to try to make this as brief as I can, so I don't cause more confusion for people. If we start the year virtual, there is a chance sometime in that semester, depending on where we're at and what it looks like, that we could kind of phase in in-person. depending on where we're at and what it looks like, that we could kind of phase in in-person learning to a certain degree. The Wayne Westland Online Learning K-12 is kind of a canned program through ingenuity where we provide a teacher mentor. Because we pay for licenses, the students would have to complete at least one semester in ingenuity before families could make decisions. The reason is we pay for it upfront and for, in order for them to get credit, they have to go through these units or modules. And again, it takes that whole semester to do so. And then we could leave that option up to families if they wanted to kind of return to where we're at in regards to the model that we're using as a school district. Again, this is going to stay open until August 17th. We have a bunch of secretaries and other instructional staff that are going to follow up with all the families that signed up, depending on the board's decision of what model we're going to adopt to see where our families are at. Again, this is a Board of Education meeting today. We will have district meetings with our administrators, our instructional, non-instructional staff tomorrow. We'll have community meetings on August 12th. Some of the, once we pick a model, some of the questions that are out there, we can add more specific answers to it because we know what direction it's going. So a lot of the questions that I heard this evening, a lot of them in the next probably week, we will be able to answer. We have to get our Return to Learn Plan to the Wayne County RISA so they can turn it into the Michigan Department of Education by August 17th. All questions that have been submitted in our FAQ document, we will continue to poll them and answer them. We will take questions for the community meetings for questions emailed to us by August 11th at 5:00 PM. We can start to answer the questions when we understand what models we've decided to kind of pursue. If you didn't get a chance to submit your question, you can see the email there, please feel free to email us. Communication is going to be the key as we move forward, both external and internal communication. It's the number one thing, it's a linchpin. Our community wants to hear from us and we're going to start to amp it up because we want to make sure we have two-way communication so everybody understands kind of the direction that we're going. So we have a Return to Learn webpage that was just created in the last two weeks. We will survey each week because we want our school community, and that means our students and parents, to give us perception data of what they're feeling. Because again, that informs us as we look at the surveys. And I've been pretty impressed with the number of people that have taken the time to do it. We will do robocalls. We have a page dedicated to FAQs, it'll be updated every Friday moving forward. Starting August 17th, we will do weekly videos that we will show up, kind of shoot out in our social media streams, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. We're going to get the message out there, we all are in this together. This is not an easy thing by any stretch of the imagination. This is very difficult. But again, I think working together as a school, community, staff, students, everything, there's no question in my mind we'll persevere. And again, we will address things as they come, we'll make some mistakes along the way, but guess what? We're going to learn and we'll be able to problem solve together to kind of address these things. I apologize because the timeline was very aggressive. But again, moving forward, I think we'll have more clarity and more collaboration. We as the parents and guardians, review and update your contact information on your parent portal accounts. This is important so we have up-to-date emails and phone numbers. So as we're kind of pushing out communication, you're getting it. I get it, people are switching cell phone providers on a monthly basis. If you do do that, please update your contact information in parent portal. This is imperative because it's a way that we communicate with you. I want to thank the Board of Education, our staff, our students and school community. Again, we're going to get through this, there's no question about it. And there's going to be more clarity in the coming weeks. And it's not going to, some of the things that are going to be decided will not happen in isolation. It's going to happen through collaboration of many different school stakeholders. So I thank you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dignan. Is there a motion from a member of the Board of Education on Superintendent Dignant's plan to begin school in the fall on a 100% virtual basis? Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Hines, is their discussion.
I have a question.
Mr. Buckle.
Yes, Mr. Dignan. You're right about one thing for certain, we're all in this together. And without the support of everyone, students, teachers, parents, administrators, our chances of success are not going to be nearly as good as if we had that kind of support. For context, I spent the better part of an hour last night speaking with a staff member and a friend of mine about virtual learning. And one of the things that came up, and by the way, he's in favor of it and has already started transitioning his classroom presentations to an online format. But one of the things that came up in our discussion was a code of conduct for using the Zoom platform, if that's what we choose to use, or Google or whatever it might be. So he was concerned about not just a behavioral code of conduct, but a dress code as well. And I'm wondering if we already have that or if we plan to discuss creating a code of that sort.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. I think it's important, again, that teachers have a voice in what the instructional framework of a day that's going to look like on Google Meet or a Zoom meeting. Again, some of these policy things, absolutely, because again, if we're virtual, the school code of conduct is still going to reach our students even though they're remote at the time. So these policy things are going to be borne out of some of the collaboration and conversations that are going to take place moving forward. Because we're going to have to identify a lot of things, we're going to have to, if a kid's sick, how can they make up some of the work that they've missed, things of that nature. There's going to be a lot of things, but the one thing I do know, educators are unbelievable when it comes to ingenuity. And I think our staff, you know, is going to really accept this challenge of putting the best product forward for us. Again, like I said, last March 13th, that was emergency learning. We've had a chance to collect digital tools, teachers have had a chance to kind of plan. Because regardless of what model was picked, you're probably going to end up at some point in time virtually. So again, I thank you for the question.
Thank you, sir. Discussion from other members of the board?
Myself if I could, Mark Neal here. Well, of course, we've listened to a lot of people speak tonight, an hour and a half of comments. And I did receive some emails as well. And I'll have to admit that the overwhelming majority seemed to be in favor of not returning to the classroom. That is not my personal feeling, as I mentioned at the study session. And I would like to speak to that for those people who believe that we should return to the classroom, whether they're in a minority or not. Our country and our state and many others have done a great job educating us as to the hazards of COVID-19. And indeed, it is a nasty virus. But I haven't forgotten the fact that we're all supposed to undertake a lot of these measures to flatten the curve, which we did a long time ago. And there was no discussion in the beginning that we were going to eliminate the virus. And yet, as I talk to people and when I read the emails that I received from some teachers and one of our bus drivers and some of the comments I listened to, I believe that a lot of people have begun to believe that this is a death threat essentially for each and every one of us and not looking at the actual percentages. And that there is no way out until we get a vaccine. And then somehow or another, this is all supposed to go away and we can return to our normal life. I mentioned last time, the virus is not going away. COVID-19 is the seventh of the COVID viruses that has been identified, and none of them are gone. All the other major viruses that we deal with, our flu viruses that we have vaccines for, still don't prevent us from being threatened by the flu. More children die from the flu every year than are currently threatened by COVID-19, or so it would appear. So it's my feeling that the right thing to do is to return to the classroom. That still allows an option for parents to have their kids do online if that's what they choose. And yet, return to the classroom. And I know under the current conditions, we have a great many safety measures that we've put into effect. So it would look different. Yeah, they'll all face the same direction and the teacher will wear a mask and a shield and they'll be a bit stilted from what it was. But maybe nowhere near as complicated as trying to imagine thousands of our students at home trying to figure out if their device is going to work, whether the internet is going to continue to work, whether their home environment is going to be adequate for them to even study, and all that goes with trying to complete virtual or online, whichever one they choose, training at home. I personally have spent my entire life either protecting or trying to save as many people from harm as I possibly can. And I was in the Army as a field medic and occupational therapy technician, 25 years in the fire service. I understand that we have a problem with the virus. I don't believe in succumbing to it to the point where we run from it and say, we're just not going back to school until this all goes away, which I think is unreasonable. I don't think it's going away. I don't think in the time period that we have set aside that we're going to come to the end of that and say, oh, it's all clear now, no one's getting COVID, we can go back to school. I think from what I read from emails that I received, there are some people who have an unrealistic expectation that we will come to the world as we knew it before at the end of this first semester or whatever it might be, and everything will go back to normal. I don't think that's possible. I think that we have a risk, but it's a reasonable risk. Nothing more than we've been facing with many other things. We had a pandemic in 2009, maybe not as nasty as this one, but there it was. We have the flu virus that kills as many as 60,000 United States citizens every year, various forms of it. We have vaccines, but we still going on with our life. And now all of a sudden, we allow ourselves to succumb to this. Maybe a little bit of a long speech, because I know I'm in the minority. I did want to speak for those people out there who think that way, who think that their children should go back to school, who realize the difficulties of trying to do any of this virtual or online training only as their only option. So if you'll allow me that one minute to rant, that's my, I won't be voting in favor of the current suggestion, but I will support any measures if it's voted in that it takes to make sure that it's successful.
Other members of the board? Mrs. Medel?
I lost my screen, I don't know what happened.
But you're here for us.
Okay, not a problem. I'm coming at this from three different angles. First and always, I'm a parent. Yes, my kids have graduated, have gone on to careers of their own. In fact, one of them is in the high school right now as a science teacher. I had to look at it as what would I do if my children were faced with this dilemma? If I were faced with this dilemma also as a parent? I love my children, I understand that they need socialization. But I also know that they need me to make wise decisions for them going forward. The next thing is that I am an educator, always been an educator, will always be an educator, whether I was in the classroom or not in the classroom, I'm still educating. I'm also looking at this from the standpoint of the person standing in front of the classroom. This is a real hard decision because you know that there are kids that need to be there. There are kids that will do fine at home on their own, and then there's the rest of the kids who fall in between somewhere. And my last, my last phase which I'm looking at it is from a person of faith. One of the things that I have faith in is our employees. I have the faith that they will step up and do the best quality job that they know how to do with whatever we throw at them, they will do the best for our students. This was not, this was not an easy thing to look at. This was not an easy thing to consider going forward. But I want to err on the side of caution. I do not want to see parents scrambling for daycare after we put kids in the classroom and then had to close down. That is the hardest thing for a parent to do is to scramble at the last minute for daycare. I don't want to put our children in jeopardy either. The best thing for me to do is to be conservative and to look at a way that we can come back in a month or two and reevaluate. Remember, in our state, foolish people do foolish things. And as the weather changes, hopefully we will not have as many people out there failing to socially distance. Hopefully by then, we will have virus levels that have dropped. This has been an unusual scenario for us to be in, one that I hope we are never in again. But going forward, like I said, I've got to be conservative with how I deal with the lives of our children and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
This is Melanie Hines, I have one thing to say as well.
Just a moment, Ms. Hines, Mrs. Walker?
Mr. Cox and the rest of the board, I was going to say what I had to say to my comments at the end, but I guess it's important that people understand why I'm going to choose to make the decision that I have made. With it, I understand that there have been flus and other things that have come along. But this is something different that people don't really understand. And yes, we, our way of life has changed and it probably will change. But I think it's hard for someone who hasn't been affected by it to understand the ramifications of this disease. I have lost a lot of family and friends. I know one of the, when you say that there was only five kids, I know one of those five children that passed. I know her parents well. And I know it's going to be an adjustment for the new school year. I know that people are concerned about providing, having to teach, help their kids learn online and to provide. But it's even harder to have to bury a child or to have to have a child or even a staff member to be in the hospital and their family can't be with them, they can't be by their side. So until we can get a better hand on it, and when you look across, I mean, you know, I know when you look at the news, they don't have a, they don't have an understanding, they don't, really don't have a hand on it. We have ideals, we think we know what it's going to do, but we don't. So this makes a difference from anything else we've ever experienced. So for me, and the family that I've come to love, which is the Wayne Westland family, I feel that we need to be virtual first. And then as they get a better grip, then we can decide to go back in the classroom. But I will not support going into the classroom at this time when we do not understand because it's lives at stake. And when I took the pledge to be a board member, I decided to take on what's best for the whole community and the whole family. And at this time, our safety, the safety of our staff, the safety of our children, that's what's important. And so that's why I'll be supporting for us to go to virtual learning until we make a better, until we can come to a better grasp of what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Shawna. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to say the same thing as well. I am a parent, I do have a student in the district, and I also have a compromised immune system. You know, my son's father, he was a police officer, he died of cancer. God forbid, my son brings that to me and I pass and he will be an orphan. You know, we have to really think about this carefully. I've lost family members, I actually got sick myself March 13th and I thought I had COVID. You know, tested negative and I just retested a couple of weeks ago because I'm an essential worker. That is not a good feeling to sit there and wonder and pray like, oh God, I hope I don't have this virus or pass it to other people. And just recently, I was watching the World News Tonight and they were saying over 100,000 children. children came down with this virus within a couple of weeks, just people reopening. So we have to put the lives of our children, the lives of our staff. This is a once in a lifetime decision where we are responsible for the life and death of these community members. So I take this very seriously. I do like to have, I'm glad that we were able to hear all the different perspectives, even the young high school student that said, you know, it's very important to have social emotional as well because, you know, they do want to see their friends, but I do, I have fear for the kids that's in the houses with domestic violence. I do fear for the kids who don't really have the technology, but we are working in that aspect. So sometimes right now, since we don't really know where this virus is going and it's constantly mutating, so I am 100% for virtual until we can get this together because like I'm a parent in this, in this school district and my son is in high school. You know, we sat there, we talked about it. How do you feel about returning back to school? My son said, Mom, I don't want to go back to school right now. I'd rather do virtual learning. So we're going to work with that. I've spoken to a lot of staff members. I have gotten a lot of emails about their concerns about returning back to school, just like the bus drivers, like people now want to put their lives and their families in jeopardy over a virus, which we can wait just a little while till we have a cure, not a cure, but more of a way to contain it. So I'm going to vote 100% with our new superintendent because I've said I would definitely support whatever he wants to do and I am 100% for virtual learning.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Anyone else? First thing I would like to say is thank you to Rebecca Hens, who is the individual that has been signing. She's probably signing about a half an hour longer than we told her she was going to sign, but she continues to stay with it because she knows that there are people who have hearing impairments that need to know what we're doing tonight. So Rebecca, many thanks to you for your professionalism. I'd also like to thank the many people who contacted me, probably more contact on this issue, on this vote than at any other time in my career in politics. And it includes students and people who work for the school, district educators, parents and people who don't have children in school anymore. And some of these people are people that I've known and talked to before and many I've never talked to at all. I appreciate everything that was said tonight and in all those conversations and what each member of the board said. You know, there probably, there isn't anybody on the board who's had more medical training than Mark Neal. I know that for a fact because I know what his background is and he's absolutely right. This virus is not going anywhere. You can lock yourself in a mayonnaise jar for three years and when you take the lid off, it's going to be sitting right there. Like Ms. Heinz said, it will mutate. All it has to mutate in order to continue to survive, it's a living organism. It's going to do everything it can to survive and that's just what we're going to have to deal with. But regardless of whether you feel as though it's being promoted for political reasons or it's, I know everybody believes that it's real. The issue here is imagine that you are the brand new superintendent of schools in Wayne Westland and you hit the ground about a month ago and in that month's time, you have come up with three different scenarios for how we can move forward. And one of them, the one that we're talking about right now is frankly terribly impressive. Many people have said, well, what are you going to do about this or what are you going to do about that? Without knowing the path that we're going, that the Board of Education intends the superintendent to be on, he can't very well answer many of those questions. Tonight, he's going to learn whether or not we're going to move forward with his recommendation and then he can begin putting the pieces in play. But I'd just like to say, Mr. Dignan, so far you've done an exceptional job, remarkable what you've been able to pull together with this team in a short period of time. And the remarkable thing in my opinion about this opportunity is that it's the first time since the governor shut down school that the district really has a say in what we're going to be doing. And what we're going to be doing is creating something that we never had before. This virtual learning program is going to be something that the Wayne Westland School District owns, that it would never have owned at this point in time were it not for the COVID virus. And I agree, life has already changed, just like Mrs. Walker said. We're just, we're the guys making buggy whips, watching the Model T walk down, go down the street saying, wow, isn't that cool? Not realizing that buggy whip manufacturing just went out of style. There are many corporations that have employees that are now working from home that just six months ago would not have made that step because they believed it to be something that would cost them inefficiencies, that people couldn't be trusted to do their work and they're finding out not only are they doing their work, they're really in many cases more productive. By the same token, there's a lot of people who have to be at work to do their job. You can't be, you can't be a remote auto mechanic. You have to be where the car is. Mr. Dignan has taken that into consideration for this entire plan. There are people that are going to need to be together in order to learn. I think it's an opportunity to create something. This is, this is an impossible situation, but we're taking these lemons and making lemonade the way I look at it because going forward, virtual learning is going to be important for the many people who are homeschooling, people in other districts that might not have all the new curriculum that Wayne Westland now has. I think it produces an opportunity that we're taking advantage of. And you know, President Teddy Roosevelt said, you do what you can, where you are, with what you have. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. We're making the most out of the situation that we're presented with. I think you did a great job, Mr. Dignan. I appreciate it and I appreciate everybody's comments.
Mr. Cox?
Dr. Weaver?
I, I do have to say, there was a comment made earlier that none of us or maybe just one of us have kids in the district. Let me just say to you as board members, we are greatly concerned about the students in Wayne Westland. And I would also like to say, Mr. President, that I do the majority of our shopping within the Wayne Westland School District. I do that purposefully. Those of you laugh at me because I have an addiction to Diet Coke. I go into 7-Eleven, I see Wayne Westland students all the time, hovered around the slurpee machine, no mask. It's not being enforced in our stores. I have actually witnessed parents in our district walking in without a mask. They are refused service and arguing with storekeepers. Now I know this may not be a very popular opinion, but we need the help of our community to mask up, to glove up and to help us fight this thing so that if the vote goes virtual tonight, that we can get this thing settled down enough where we can be back in school. Thank you.
Mr. Neal? Motion to approve Mr. Dignan's virtual learning and it was seconded. Please call the roll. Microphone on, Mr. Neal?
No.
There it is. Mrs. Medel?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, no. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox? Yes. Six, yea, one nay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 652.20, which is the Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Medel?
Real short, looking at the time, as required by federal law, all board trustees received a copy of the Head Start Report for July of 2020, including, included in their agenda packet this evening. So I need a motion to accept the July 2020 Head Start Report as provided.
Move by Mrs. Heinz, support by?
Mrs. Walker, support.
Roll call, vote please. Is there any discussion on the Head Start Report? Was a little short this time, but what the heck. Go ahead, Mr. Neal. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medel?
Yes.
President Cox? I vote yes. Next item on the agenda is 652.25, which is the Wayne Westline Educational Foundation Report. Mrs. Medel? Mrs. Medel, for those that don't know, it's chairing a committee that is reviewing the possibility of resurrecting the Wayne Westline Educational Foundation. Mrs. Medel?
And actually, the word that we are using is rebranding. So what I need to inform you is back in 1980, our superintendent of schools at the time and our school board formulated a corporation, not a corporation, but an Articles of Incorporation for the Wayne Westland Foundation for the Improvement of Instruction. Since that time, they have collected monies that have been used for classroom improvement programs that will enhance the students' learning. What we have done is gone through and tried to read the paperwork that we were handed and it's virtually impossible, but I was able to retype and come up with most of the language so that we could read it. It has been our recommendation that we change some of the incorporation papers before we resubmit them to the state so that we can change this from being a school-based foundation to being a community-based foundation. And we are at the point right now where this is what we are looking at as to which articles we would like to rework so that we can rebrand this, so that we can solicit donations for this foundation that will be used for improvement of instruction.
Mrs. Medel, thank you for that report and thank you for your work in very quickly getting, getting the rubber on the road here. And I'd like to also extend through you to the members of the committee that's working on this, my thanks to them as well.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is 653.20, our citizens' comments on non-agenda items. So if anyone would like to address the board on issues that were not on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. And once again, I will begin with, okay, Thomas McKissick. Thomas, remember that we'd like your name and address and you have to turn your microphone Microphone is still off. Thomas, lower left-hand corner of the screen, you'll see an icon with a line through it. You've got to click that. Okay, having some trouble with Thomas McKissick, so we're going to move on to Tanya Karpinski, Ms. Karpinski, once again, you have to turn, you have to unmute your microphone. Okay, we're unable to get any audio from Tanya. We're going to move on to the next person that would like to address the board. Tracy, Tracy, will you begin with your first and last name and your address, please? You have to unmute your mic. We're going to move on from Tracy to Michelle Meesel, I think. Yeah, see that? Okay, we're going to have to move on. I have a Barb. Barb or Bill? Okay, we're going to move on to Rob. Rob, if you'd like to address the board, you have to introduce yourself, first and last name and tell us where you live and turn your microphone on. Okay, we're going to try Tim Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert? Introduce yourself, first and last name, where you live and turn your microphone on. Unmute your microphone. Next speaker is Daniel. Next speaker is Jessica West. Ladies and gentlemen, I do not know.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I got you there. Okay, that's not going to work. We're going to move on to Jessica West. Jessica?
Good evening again, board. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I appreciate the interpreter's work and I know I was speaking very quickly earlier, but I did receive notice that you're not able to be in gallery view. Unfortunately, our hearing impaired persons were not able to see or hear any of the materials.
Okay, will the administrator please turn the one screen off? We're listening to Jessica West at this time.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you were able to hear me, but?
We can hear you.
Why, but you were kicked off? I wanted to bring?
I didn't say nothing.
I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that unfortunately, because gallery view seemed to be disabled, no one was able to see the interpreter. Therefore, our hearing impaired persons were unable to participate today.
Oh, this, we didn't have any way for a hearing impaired person to participate directly. Anyway, they can see the taped meeting later on when it's presented and they can follow it that way. Other than that, some of these, some of the challenges, you know, this is one of the challenges that we're dealing with, with, this is new ground we're covering. So I appreciate your comments and letting us know. We'll, we'll try to look into how we can do a better job with that. I've got something LGK40. I don't know what that is. Tracy, is there a Tracy? Tracy, please introduce yourself. Unmute your microphone and introduce your, your name and address. Okay, we're going to move on to Mike Sylvia. Mike, would you like to address the board? Please do so now.
Hi, this is Mike Sylvia. You hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Hi, I'm an employee. I live over here in Westland. I'm a school bus driver. My concern is, is if you're going to virtual learning, are you going to give all your employees a proper layoff so they can collect unemployment? Thank you.
Of course, one of the things that we're all going to have to determine. Thank you for your comments, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
He's not going to be laid off, is he?
Okay, seeing none. We're going to move to 654.20, Review and Recommendations, Members of the Board of Education. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate the input of our community tonight. I'm thankful for it. It was good to hear. And also just want to say that I think we made the right decision and certainly it's much easier to correct and move forward than it is to get into something and have to stop. So that So that was the reason for my vote tonight. Also, I'd like to make the board aware, some board members are not aware that we had a former board member in our district by the name of Laurel Ryzenen, who passed away in July. And I just wanted to say that Laurel was a great supporter of our district, especially the Wayne community. And I want to reach out to Andy Ryzenen, her son, and say that we're sorry for his loss. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Ms. Hines? Ms. Hines?
I'm sorry, having some communication difficulties. I'd like to thank Mr. Dignan for all his hard work. You know, I've been staying in touch with him, asking questions. He's been really fast at getting those answers. We've been giving information out to the community because I know a lot of parents are concerned. So you guys did a good job. I'd like to thank the board for your decision. And we're going to have a great year regardless of what happens. We're going to keep that pride up. And I'd like to thank all the community members who participated, staff members, because your voice is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mrs. Medel? Your microphone, Mrs. Medel?
It takes technology to make me look foolish. Thank you. Like, I need a whole lot of help here. Um, I want to thank all of our citizens for being part of today's discussion, whether you were able to express your opinions or whether your technology foiled your attempts like mine does from time to time. I appreciate that, that you were part of the discussion. I'm one of those people who, I'll put my money where my mouth is. So, Mr. Dignan, going forward, I'm offering my services as an educator. If you need help with tutoring or anything else, please let me know. I, you know, once an educator, always an educator. I would be willing to help out in any way I possibly can to help educate the students of our school district. And with that said, I hope everybody has a safe drive home.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. Some people do not know how to retire. Mrs. Walker?
Um, thank you, President Cox. I just want to say thank you to my fellow board members for agreeing to go virtual to start out. I just think it's important for the safety and health of our community that we do it that way. I know that it was rough last, last year, at the end of the year, but that was something that was thrown to us, and we didn't have time to prepare. This time, we'll have time to prepare. And from looking at some of the things that Mr. Dignan has already addressed and plans to address, we're going to make sure that everyone is, that no one is left behind, and that everyone, no matter what your situation is, that you'll have the support and the resources that you need to be successful. Believe me, we don't want to see anyone fail. And so, we're going to do everything we have to do as a district to make sure that everyone has everything that they need to be successful. Thank you to each and everyone who participated this evening, to all the comments, the emails. I, I have read and I've heard, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate what you had to say. And with that being said, I just want to say, thank you again, and good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you, sir. I want to thank you for the fine job that you've done moderating the citizen comments tonight. I appreciate the good job that you've done, and I appreciate the comments that our citizens have offered up. And, Mr. Dignan, I think that you've done the omen's job on, on getting us to this point. I haven't shared my thoughts on, on the virus or the decision that we've made. So I'd like to share a couple of thoughts with you that I've been thinking about for some time. One of the positive things, if there is one, to come out of this pandemic is the fact that we now realize, or I hope we realize, just how important it is to have our students in a classroom with a professional educator. That is a truly marvelous thing. I hope everyone appreciates that in a way that they didn't before. Anything less is just simply less. But the risk involved in going back to a full classroom setting at this time are just too great. Our knowledge of how this virus is transmitted is incomplete and still evolving. Some in our school community are more susceptible to infection than others. For some folks, there may even be a risk of long-term complications. Some of our support staff and teachers are older. Some have pre-existing health conditions. They're already experiencing shortages of both teachers and bus drivers. If we would see high rates of absenteeism, and if we go back to a face-to-face system, I'm almost certain that we would, we really couldn't find enough subs to begin to fill all the voids that would occur. And if we did go back, what kind of day would the kids have when they returned to their classrooms? And I'm thinking primarily about the elementary kids. Having to comply totally with all of the current safety protocols. They'd get on the bus with a face mask, try to social distance, although I think, I have heard a couple of bus drivers say that isn't going to happen. When they got to school, they would march, social distancing, up and down the halls, wearing their face masks. In the classrooms, they'd sit at their desks. The desks would be six feet apart. They would be looking through plexiglass screens. They wouldn't have to wear masks in the classroom, but there'd be no interaction, no socializing with their classmates. There'd be required hand washing by the entire class every two to three hours. At lunch, they'd have to sit at their desk, and they'd have to be looking through those same plexiglass screens. Research period would be designed to make sure that everyone stays away from everyone else, always obeying social distancing. If we returned to face-to-face instruction, it certainly wouldn't be anywhere near the normal school experience that you and I and everyone else has come to appreciate. Now, I don't like distance learning any more than anyone else, but I dislike it less than all of the other options. And with that, sir, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Neal?
Yes. The comments that I've made up till now, certainly, I want to make it clear that I acknowledge there are both students and parents with special medical needs that just can't go back to the classroom, can't have their children go back to the classroom. And we have to be able to offer something for those families until things get much, much better than what they are. But that's really one of the biggest problems that we face right now, now that we've chosen to go virtual, is how do we decide to do anything else but? What parameters are we going to identify allow us to go back into the classroom? There's as many diverse opinions as there are people listening to this board meeting today. I've heard through email someone suggesting that we have to have at least a 14-day string of no COVID cases at all before they return to school, and then everything in between. My point here being that we do have to, at some point, go back. And we do have to go back with the idea that there is still going to be some risk, like with every other illness that we face every day. And we all know that in our schools, our kids always have a runny nose, a cold, the flu, the whatever, meningitis, all things that we've allowed ourselves to have children attend school when these things are about us. So we will have to identify that at some point. And hopefully, at that same time, we can identify that we can eliminate some of the other special requirements. I want to thank Mr. Dignan, and not just he, but all his staff. I've had the opportunity to talk to him and listen to how much work they've put into preparing for all these different options that we've been presented with. I very much appreciate that. And I know that our teachers will do a fabulous job in presenting their programs virtually to the, for our students, and so that our parents will feel that their children are still getting a great education. One day, we'll go back. I hope it's very soon. And with that, my comments end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I'll try to be, try to be quick. I'd like to say that the idea that the Wayne Westland School District would begin school in the fall, both in classroom, split by alphabet, and virtually, would just split the efforts and the focus of our administrative and teaching staff. What some people have mentioned, that as a matter of fact, I got an email just a second ago from somebody who said, "Gee, our virtual learning model is inadequate." Well, yes, it is inadequate because we weren't concentrating on that. We were concentrating on classroom instruction. But now, that has changed. And with the concentration on virtual learning, Mr. Dignan is, is going to be able to concentrate, and his staff concentrate on one thing. And it's difficult enough, just that one thing, without having a completely different model also. Now, I can't say enough that, that the thing that we haven't been talking about is this took some real administrative leadership. He took seven people who have all kinds of different interests tugging at them and brought us together. And one of the ways that he did that is he met individually with every member of the board. He didn't put it out there that if we wanted to meet with him, we could call this number and make an appointment, but rather, he reached out so that he could have a meeting and learn what each board member thought. And then he put his plan together. Great job. Very, very pleased. And I think it represents the first step in the, the direction I wanted to go in for years, which is, when I was a kid in high school, it was not in the Wayne Westland District. I went to school in Trenton, probably a 35-minute ride south from Westland, and we knew who Wayne Westland was in Trenton. Everybody did. When I was going to school in the 70s, the, the school district's performance was such that it was, it was heralded all over the state for a variety of different reasons. And there's every reason to believe that's exactly where we should be again. But it's going to take real leadership. And I think that's kind of leadership that we saw tonight. Thank you, Mr. Dignan. I appreciate it. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Vote by Mrs. Medel. Is there support?
Support.
Vote by Ms. Hines. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Dr. Weaver?
Dr. Weaver, your microphone is off.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medel?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Mr. Dignan, you have a lot of work to do. I also vote yes. We are adjourned.